Morning, everybody, and welcome to B County Commissioners's Court. Today is Monday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is nine oh five A.M. We're physically located at the B County Courthouse Commissioners' Court Room Number One Ten, One of Bible's Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, seven eight one oh two. I'm going to call this special call meeting to order. That was agenda item number one. I didn't ask anybody to pray for us, so would everybody please stand and join Commissioner Lenny in a brief prayer?
Dear heaven and father, thank you for today. Thank you for allowing us to all wake up and enjoy another day. Thank you for the rain that we're getting and will receive. Watch over each and every one of us. May we go through the day, through the week, through the year safely, and watch over this Commissioners' Court as they make the right decisions for our community in this county. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Lenny. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge.
Honoring the Texas right. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
It's interesting, in the Texas pledge, oftentimes when there are big crowds, there aren't this crowd, the, I know, we need to go fast before the internet breaks down on us. But the timing of when you say the words on the pledge varies, and I notice when I'm in a larger crowd, usually there's like a rush to get the Texas pledge done, and so the pausing is different than our conventions, but I rather prefer our conventions. Stay tuned for this and other interesting anecdotes all throughout the morning. We're on agenda item number four, recognition of visitors. We do have some visitors in the audience today that I'm aware of. They are here on agenda items. No need to identify yourself at this time for any other visitors that we have. If you want to identify yourself for the record, that's great. And if you do, if you are speaking on an agenda item, you're more than welcome to identify yourself under this agenda item. This isn't public comment. This is just where you tell us who you are for the record. But again, if you are speaking on an agenda item later in the meeting, then you'll identify yourself at that time, so that's not necessary. Is there anybody who wishes to identify themselves for the record? Good. Moving on, agenda item number five, Commissioners' Court, opening remarks. Commissioner Lenny, I believe, we're starting with you this week.
That is correct. Good morning, everyone. First of all, I'd like to recognize all of the students that participated in the Junior Livestock Show. I was humbled and fortunate enough to announce the winners of the pig competition. One of the biggest insights or highlights that I had of that week was I was able to compete in what they call the old farts competition. So they assigned me a pig, beautiful pig, multicolored, very smart pig, by the way. So it kind of reminded me, for those of you that remember Green Acres, they have a pig by the name Ronald who was very smart. So I think my pig was pretty good because he followed me the whole way around.
Was it rounded or was it square dog?
It was, no, it was rounded.
And did he throw his back, hit, swing, walk, or did he?
He did, but I didn't pay attention. I found out that I was walking in the wrong side. This was a new venture for me, so, you know, my boots got the whole effect of peeing in the rain.
That never comes off. That's never, you know, separate boots for pigs.
I didn't recognize it till the next day when I went into my closet and said, man, something's not right in here. So, yes, it was good. So anyhow, so the competition was great, but I wasn't alone because I had some staffers from our D.A.'s office that also participated. Great learning event for me to validate how much work these students put into this event. Pretty awesome, and congratulations to all of the students that participated. In the area of the E.O.C., we continue to progress well. The generator was installed on its pad. We completed a wall for the generator, which this wall is going to be utilized to buffer any exhaust that comes from the generator during the operation. Had a little bit of a setback. The certificate of compliance, which was scheduled to be issued last week, we had to postpone it to the end of this week. During the testing, we detected the air conditioning wasn't shutting off the way it was intended to do in the event of a fire. So what we discovered, it wasn't the wiring, it was the panel board on the A.C. that's going to have to be replaced. Should be in by the end of the week. Hopefully, everybody officially moved in. Some of the moves have already started. It's going to be a great building. The parking lot and drainage issue I'll discuss later. Have some agenda items that are kind of there. We started some road discussions with the team about the U.S.S. River Authority. There's a grant application that's been submitted on our behalf, so looking forward to getting more information of that. I attended the Volunteer Fire Department's Quarterly Chiefs Meeting. Very informative. We had, Sheriff was there, which was a great honor to have his presence there, but very, very good meeting, very, very informative. There's always a lot to share at those meetings. Also, I attended a B.D.A. meeting. Had an opportunity to meet with the new owner that's going to be bringing some new business into the county. I'd like to hear the Commissioner Fahey's give some of the details of what exciting news is coming to our county, so looking forward to hearing that. Also, I attended a Praise of District Board meeting, which was good information as well too. I skid more, met with one of our local constituents here that had a lot of concerns around illegal dumping from one of our local businesses. Also, he had some concerns about the high grass at the intersections where the stop signs are about getting cut. He was very upset about the trash coming from this business and it was blown into his property. So after our discussion, the illegal dumping, the trash was removed, and he was happy again. I'm planning on meeting with Community Affairs and also Road and Bridges to see what we can do to help mitigate that situation. The gentleman was very adamant to point out that it was county property and it was a county responsibility to pick up the trash on all county property. So in light of, you know, having previous discussion with the business owner to see how they can help, and it just, you know, mainly paper and debris, that's when they come out eating a sandwich or taco or coffee rather than putting them in the garbage can, I think they elected to do it inside of it. It's been an issue for many, many, many years prior to me coming into office. So anyhow, we're going to continue moving forward. We're going to take some positive steps to make that better place and put it cleaner. Also, I had an opportunity, oh, skipped a little bit here, so precinct four, we're going to be moving forward with our renovations on the windows and doors, so we're going to skid more, see some work coming up pretty soon. So it's going to be a place on our schedule to get that done. In Tyne, I'd like to reach out and thank our Road and Bridge crew. They, this past weekend, they picked up seventy, sixty-seven tires and trash in Tyne, so they dumped illegally, you know, up the interior. Now that's coming. I'm in the process of working out the detailed process and what it actually costs the county and the taxpayers for picking up this illegal dumping. And then the sad part about that is I'm going to be picking up all of this trash and, you know, it's taken our crew, our staff time away from doing other things like cutting the grass, maintaining our drainage properties. So those things are taken away because we're picking up illegal dumping. So if anyone sees these activities that are taking place, please notify the proper authority so they can help to mitigate that, so it's continued work going on. Also had an opportunity to meet with one of our local businesses in Tyne, and he gave me an overview of their manufacturing process. During the walkthrough, he gave me an opportunity to look at how some of their robotics that they use to bag all of the corn, how that whole process works. Kind of brought me back to one of my memories when I was in college, one of the pneumatics and hydraulics class that I took in college was pretty enlightening, just to see the mechanics, everything was automated, how things were working, everything from picking up the bag, filling a bag up, and then I got this final location to be brought to those facilities Also, just would like to remind everyone, for those in the area, that the Popolo's will be conducting their annual fundraiser coming up pretty soon, so if anyone would like to donate or provide any kind of support, please let them know, we appreciate that. With that on, I'll slow it to Commissioner.
Commissioner. All right. First one I want to start with is the stealing of stop signs and other signs in my precinct. And we had to replace three stop signs this past week and two of the no outlet signs, and I believe there's others in different precincts, I don't know if there's losing signs, but...
Did you borrow them?
I don't know, but the ones that concern me the most are stop signs. If somebody removes a stop sign, they run that stop sign, there's an accident, somebody gets killed or whatever. I know that's county property, so I don't know what court it would end up, but J.P. said, no, it would end up in county court or something.
County court of law.
I don't know what...
County court of law, just for the record.
But the signs, and if anybody has any information, they're watching and they know, you know, some kids or somebody has these signs, please call into the sheriff's office, call, you know, call me, let us know, we'll call the judge's office. We need to stop that, just for the safety of, you know, our community, so. The second, I had the, I got the privilege of judging the baked goods at the B County Junior Livestock Show, so, man, right in my, right down my alley, too, was the cakes and cobbler's that I got to do.
The tasting for cakes and cobbler's?
Yes.
Interesting. That was, did you choose well?
No, cookies. Man, my God, there was fifty entries of cookies. Thank God I didn't get that.
Any unsatisfied parents, students who competed in the cobbler, cobbler and cake? Please direct your complaints to Commissioner Lenny, this is...
No, that was an honor. My wife and baby and I, she judged the projects and I judged the food, and it was good.
You got it better, good.
I also had the privilege of announcing in the poultry competition on Wednesday, and that was pretty, I learned a lot. I like eating a pig, but I did learn a whole lot on the poultry field. But my hat goes off to those kids. I mean, it was cold, the weather was miserable, and they still competed. Judge, what went out the most is all the people there not getting paid and going out there and helping, just their goal is just to help those kids. I mean, just above and beyond, and that was pretty outstanding. And I got to watch a bunch of young students seeing the National Anthem at several different events. They didn't just play it on a tape or anything like that, they sang it, and they did great. So that was pretty awesome. I got the spot for the show on Saturday, and that was long, and again, everybody's in that room in that expo was there just to provide for the kids and make sure that they got the most they could for their projects and the add-ons and things like that, so I learned a lot there, too. But I do want to shout out to the community of how generous our business people were and our, just the folks here in B County, and there was other companies from outside the county, but our, our businesses here in town, need a pat on the back because they really went above and beyond to provide money for these kids, you know, so I do want to shout out to that. I saw the, all these folks, a bunch of men got together, a roll-up door broke at the pavilion at the livestock deal, and they got, I know that Josh Perkins and Quattro were there together, they had cable and tools and everything, and they had that thing fixed in twenty minutes. I mean, by the time you get somebody to go out there, I know maintenance was overloaded and pulled in different directions, but to fix it, and they got after it and they fixed it, so, hey, that's, that's a pretty awesome job. We started our interviews this week for the new B.D.A. director, and that starts on Thursday, so we'll get that going, and then, I guess I'm going to end it with this one, Judge. Most of my last two weeks was consumed with the Protech and the boiler here at the courthouse.
What's going on there?
We're going to meet with them, we're going to meet with them tomorrow, and I got an agenda item that we'll discuss a little bit later on in this meeting. But just getting here and trying to get this, you know, it's outdated, there's a lot of parts missing, there's this, I mean, John went above and beyond, we had him here day and night, and I was calling him, I know he got tired seeing my name on his phone, you know, but I was ringing his phone constantly. We got some of the rooms a little bit better, but not all of them, it's not a hundred percent, so we need to address that, you know, so it's, with that, Judge, I'll pass on to you.
Sure. All right. Been a busy last two weeks, actually. I attended the eighty-ninth legislative session in Austin and watched the swearing-in of our senator and all the other senators, that was a pretty cool, exciting thing to do. Also, I attended the Crimestoppers fundraiser event, and that was, that was a packed house.
Yeah.
That's good.
We were all there.
Yeah, we were all there, all of them there.
It was good turnout.
Yeah, it really was, it really was. Also, one thing, Road and Bridge, I contacted them about some, some growth issues on La Pata Road, and they've already started working on that, and then also Sugaric Road and Gil Ranch Road, they need to be addressed as well still. I sent a bunch of pictures to Jonathan, and so they, you know, they didn't have to actually drive out there and see it, they can look at that and see, the pictures definitely told the story, so, anyway. Also, thank you to Kenneth Mendoza out on, am I stealing signs? He went out to Ridgeway, and someone stole all the Chevron signs on the ninety-degree turns, so he went out there and replaced those, you know, out of Ridgway, so appreciate it, and I guarantee the people that live out there that drive that really appreciate it, other than the ones that are taking them. Want to thank Robbie Guerrero, he had helped me pick up a bunch of trash and stuff at San Pedro Cemetery, the Saturday before last, got all that cleaned up. And then also, I teamed up with Sontex Realtors, we, during this little cold snap, we delivered heaters to people that had absolutely no, no source of heat in their homes. So it was something to, when you give someone something like that and to see the expression on their face, the gratitude, appreciation, you know, when someone truly needed something, that was, that was awesome. So we gave out a bunch of heaters to people. Also, during that cold snap, I had a resident on Blueberry Hill call me, there was some confusion with A.E.P. on this resident's home, and the power got cut off, so made a few phone calls to A.E.P., and then got with Ramon Flores, who, he got out there and got the power back on. And then also Robbie, as the environmental officer, he contacted A.E.P. to assure everything was cleared up, there was no other issues, so all that was taken care of, so the lady will keep her power on. During the cold, it's been cold, hasn't it? Want to thank Pastor Captain Rex, he opened up Trinity Chapel and provided a place to stay and food during this entire cold spell. And then I also reached out to a few of the hotels in the area, and want to thank Hampton Inn here in Beville, and Colin spoke to Sarah Vincino, and she's our manager, and they comped two rooms to any family that needed a place to go to get out of this cold that didn't have any place, so hats off to Hampton Inn for doing that, that was awesome. And also, about the livestock, as one of the livestock superintendents, I attended the livestock show and worked it, and, you know, we didn't mind that door being broke Wednesday morning, and we were there at eight o'clock in the morning for weigh-in. We're like, okay, it could stay broke for a little while, it was cold, but got all that done, and hats off to all the participants with the livestock show. Then I also participated, attended and participated in the auction Saturday, so that was, that was a packed house, too, I think.
Oh, God, yes, it was.
Good stuff. So, anyway, last but certainly not least, I want to recognize an employee that has been dedicated to this county and will truly be missed, and, but still continues to vow to help out the county whenever he can, and I want to say best wishes to Captain Robbie Guerrero on your new and exciting job.
And Judge, that's back to you. Thank you. Thank you. Great reports, gentlemen, really appreciate them. Last couple of weeks I've been busy, but, and I had expected that Commissioner DeWitt would attend, he unfortunately had a conflict that he couldn't get out of, and so I was expecting that he would make this comment instead of me making it myself, so, but for the interest, getting it on the record, I'll go ahead and share it myself. Last week was Coastal Bend Council of Governments Board Meeting. During that board meeting, and I'm the current vice chair, or I was the current vice chair of the, of the board, Coastal Bend Council of Governments is a seventeen-county regional entity, initially set up and funded through the state, there's several of them in the state of Texas, every county is part of the, part of COG for, for nine-one-one. And so their nine-one-one program is something that we're tied into, and all the other counties in our region are tied into. They also help with solid ways, contamination solutions, ways to bring grant dollars to our region to improve the lives of all South Texans. And now they do, they have large programs to assist working mothers who don't have childcare options that they can afford, to provide free meals. They, they are the grant holder for large sums of money that go to our Meals on Wheels and different programs like that, to provide food for elderly folks who cannot otherwise obtain it for themselves. We have a new executive director, and she is dynamic, and I expect in the coming years, definitely in these first few months, but definitely in the coming years as well, that will continue to see a increase in the grants that the COG obtains, the scope of services that they can support and help, and so I'm really excited about the future of COG, and I was appointed as the chair of the COG for this upcoming year. Yeah, hopefully. They're also, for example, and I guess I should mention this, the county has some desires and hopes to be able to improve one or more bridges in the area to provide resiliency in the face of storms, security and safety for our first responders, and also individuals that live in our community who infrequently, but occasionally do, do get stranded due to high waters over low, low bridge crossings. We have a grant in, I believe, through this program, so the federal government gave the state of Texas a huge bucket of money, and said, figure out how to distribute it, and the state of Texas tasked each COG to determine how to split up that money, and the Coastal Bend COG went through that process, it was somewhat contested because there's some larger municipalities in our region that thought that their share should be calculated differently than the share for smaller counties and smaller municipalities. But anyway, B County has submitted, I believe, two or three grants, I don't see Jim this morning, so...
Four.
Four, four point two. We have four point two million, but how many actual grants have we submitted, separate grants?
I would say there was like four, four, I mean, that were part of the big one?
Mm-hmm.
I think four or six.
I think there's six because Tyne is included in there, Silver Creek, six thirty-one, Pettis, four for sure. And these projects are big money projects that the county can't accomplish without these grant funds, and this has been going on now for, I think, eighteen months or so, sixteen, eighteen months, and we're still waiting to hear back. A lot... eighteen months, and we're still waiting to hear back, um, a lot of that has to do with the interplay and control between, uh, the federal, uh, entities, they've granted the money to the state of Texas, and the state of Texas with the manner in which we've, uh, addressed, uh, distributing those funds around the state, so, hopefully those log jams are clearing up and will get, uh, the grants awarded to us that we so desperately need, um, please rest assured that your county government, your commissioners, uh, in which, uh, in the precincts in which these projects have been slated are working diligently to try to get, uh, a grant awarded out of the black hole, um, and so it takes time, uh, but I know, uh, that your elected officials are working hard to do everything that we can do, uh, to get that money to you.
Jill, Coach, and, uh, B County's application is in the final review phase to ensure compliance with appropriate guidance, we're unable to provide a timeline, but we will reach out and give anything additional.
And that was just earlier this morning?
That was just a couple days ago.
Perfect. So, uh, so there's progress, but government progress is either blisteringly fast or, yeah, or incredibly slow, um, two other things that just echo the same sentiments that my commissioners all made with respect to the B County Livestock and Homemaker Show, thank you guys all for, uh, volunteering your time, I know what you guys got to do was fun, um, and, uh, and I enjoyed, unfortunately, I had a conflict last week, uh, when I was slated to, uh, to assist, and that conflict was, uh, was important, was dealing with indigenous defense in our three county region, Eli, Oto, Matt Millen County, uh, which is probably much more detailed than you all care, uh, to hear about, but special thanks, uh, to Commissioner Lenny, um, not only for his, uh, presence there, as with the other, uh, commissioners, but also his active role as a superintendent in the livestock show, the board of the B County, uh, Junior Livestock and Homemaker Show, the superintendents, um, and all of the parents and non-parents, sometimes grandparents, sometimes uncles, cousins, sometimes people who've just been involved in it for so long, and they're so passionate about it, they continue, uh, to work there, thanks for all of y'all, y'all's hard work throughout the year, it goes on largely unseen, um, while you're doing everything else, uh, with your regular job and your other family commitments, so thank you for that, it's, and I've said this, uh, every chance I get, there is no other voluntary entity, charitable entity in B County that puts more money back into B County citizens' hands, being the children that, uh, work so hard on these projects than the B County Livestock Show, and I don't know, and I, I wanted to ask, do, did y'all, do y'all have any preliminary numbers?
No, after yesterday on the final tally, yeah, people are still doing add-ons.
Right, and, and add-ons, if you're interested, if you want to find a way to support, maybe you know some kids, or you know some families who may have kids, if you reach out to our, um, uh, I can think of agricultural department, that's not it, somebody owes me.
The word to the office.
Yeah, thank you, uh, if you reach out to, to the office, they can get you a list of the, of the wins, yeah, you speak with Ms. Kathy Ball, um, they can get you a listing of all the projects that went to auction, and you can scroll through that, were there a hundred and eighty-two, a hundred and ninety, how many this year, do you know, how many lots?
One sixty-five, I think, one sixty-seven, I believe, something like that.
Lots of opportunities to donate, uh, add-ons can be made in any amount, uh, they can be made in any, uh, uh, any creative fashion that you want to make them, you can work with Ms. Ball on that, um, but do know that ninety percent of that money actually goes directly back to, uh, the children, the other ten percent is retained by the show board to maintain and upgrade, uh, their facility, uh, under a long-term lease, uh, the show barn, uh, out at the expo, and also other, uh, assets out at the expo, um, that they use, um, and, uh, and so it's a wonderful relationship that the county has with the livestock show board, um, and, uh, and so please do consider supporting it if you're looking for ways to, uh, support our local community. Finally, I'd ask that we take a moment of silence for a dear friend of mine, a former, uh, B County attorney, a longtime attorney, uh, in B County, uh, who recently passed away after, uh, a bout with, uh, a complicating series of illnesses, Marion Williams, uh, passed away last, uh, I believe it was last week, maybe it was two weeks ago, uh, his services, uh, were last week, um, and, uh, and I just want to take a brief moment, uh, to reflect on the fleeting nature of life. Thank you very much, um, if you knew, uh, Mr. Williams, you liked him, uh, he wasn't born in B County, but he got here, uh, through marriage, and he quickly became a part of the community, his life was dedicated not only to his family, uh, and his clients, uh, he loved being a country lawyer, he loved helping, uh, real people with real problems and finding real solutions, uh, uh, to, to aid in their life, um, and his passion for, uh, the church, uh, St. Phillips, here in Beeville, and other, the Barnark, uh, Library, um, are a testament to his, uh, lifetime efforts to improve the world around him, starting right here, uh, in B County, so, uh, our sincere condolences to his family on their loss. Okay.
Judge, you weren't at five at the, during last live show, commissioners raised your number a few times.
Great.
You didn't know you were doing that add-on?
Yeah, well, yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, we did have your number, though.
Yeah, well, and I, 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 I talked to one during the sell, I, I did receive a communication from, uh, somebody that I, a dear friend, somebody that I know very well, and, and think the world of, asking if I'd be interested in, uh, joining, and the way the B County Livestock Show, uh, sale operates is unique, uh, in large part to many other sales, so when you're bidding, and I haven't been in the last few mon, uh, flat, last few years for good measure, good reason, uh, the way that it worked when I was there is, you'd say, okay, I'm gonna take lot ten, it's a good kid, want to help him out, and then my job is to run around, uh, a packed auditorium, and try to find enough money, uh, to get a winning bid on his project, this is a premium sell, so all the money goes to the kid, the kid keeps the animal, uh, only in the commercial heifer cell do you actually, uh, take possession of the animal, so next year, if you're thinking, oh, I'll go support the kids, and you go to the heifer cell, do know that if you're the winning bidder, you need to show up with the trailer, or the, uh, the, the children's family will show up with your cows in a trailer at your property, uh, to deliver them to you.
We went to the, to the heifer cell.
Did you, did you buy anything?
I bought a pair.
All right.
And it was thirty entries.
Yeah, it was a big turnout, the heifer cell's been growing the last several years. Are they out at your property now?
They're already, we all went the next morning, and we were in line to pick them up.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep an eye on them, because sometimes they tend to be a little wild. But, uh, no, I got a call, and, uh, in, in even not attending the livestock, uh, show, I still got cajoled into, and I was happy to, uh, to provide, uh, support, uh, on one lot, and, uh, and I go through the, I do the add-on process, uh, myself, and I think we have thirty, thirty days or so, there's a long, there's a good long time from now, it's not something you have to do today or you miss the opportunity, there's a lot of time to, uh, get a call, figure out who the winners are, and, uh, and provide add-ons. Anything else? I've ram, I rambled, and I rambled, and I wasted your time, so moving on, agenda item number seven, the following items are of an administrative nature, commissioner's court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or county judge. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is effective, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Siri's starting, Siri's starting.
Be careful what you say.
Motion passes three yays and one nay from Siri. Just kidding, motion passes, uh, without exception, moving on, discussing, consider action on the following items, agenda item number eight, B Area Partnership update given by Randy Seitz, B A B President, CEO, Mr. Seitz, thank you for being here this morning, come on up to the lecture and identify yourself once again for the record, and, uh, look forward to hearing what you have to report.
Judge, commissioners, my name is Randy Seitz, I'm the president of the B Area Partnership, we're the lead economic development agency for the county and the city, it's my pleasure to be here today to, uh, give you an update on economic development activities for two thousand and twenty-four, so, as some of you may be aware, we start, we start out the year with, uh, a couple of, uh, very aggressive goals, uh, the first is to convince, uh, ten percent of the leads that come through our office to actually come here for a site tour and look at our properties and look at our community, the second part of the goal is to convince ten percent of those that come here for the site tour to actually invest and create jobs and opportunities for people in the community, so in two thousand and twenty-four, we had seventy-four leads that came through our office, we sent out seventeen prospect proposals, if all seventeen were to come to fruition, we had about three hundred and thirty-eight million dollars of capital investment to go after, and if all seventeen prospects ended up investing here, there were seventeen hundred jobs to go after, so out of those, um, seventeen prospect proposals, we had fifteen site tours, and out of those fifteen site tours, there were three companies that invested in B County, uh, to create jobs, uh, the first is a company, and, um, I cannot mention the name just yet because they're in the process of sending out their, their press release, but it's a company that is involved with, uh, putting in broadband infrastructure, and they've chosen B County as a location to put in ten million dollars worth of broadband infrastructure, this will create about sixty temporary construction jobs while all the under, under, um, underground fiber is installed, and all of the sonic rings are built, and the cabinets that all the technology will go into, and then, of course, the tower equipment, um, we are also in contention for their, uh, South Texas headquarters, um, they have, uh, located a site in downtown Beeville that they're very interested in, and that's gonna be hopefully part of the announcement that they make in the next couple of weeks, and that will come with sixty, uh, permanent jobs, and these jobs would be everything from, uh, installers, maintenance people to the sonic rings and, um, and boxes that are installed throughout the community, uh, salespeople, um, uh, management, and then the installers of routers and equipment in residences and, and businesses, so we're very excited about, uh, this investment and the jobs that come along with it, um, also Electric Power Energy Solutions, this is a company from, uh, Michigan that also has a facility in Mexico, uh, we work very closely with the B Development, or the B Development Authority on this project, um, this is a company that designs and manufactures electric vehicles, so they have, uh, very close relationships with companies like General Motors, uh, and they, uh, produce everything from small vehicles that are very similar to a Polaris, um, electric yachts, um, and then, uh, uh, airport vehicles, so the best way I can describe it is, uh, when you're sitting on the tarmac waiting for your plane to take off, and you see that train go by that has all the luggage, that first vehicle is an electric vehicle that pulls that train, uh, they make a very similar product like that, um, so, uh, most of the labor-intensive work will be done in Mexico at their facility, and then final assembly and distribution would be here in, in B County, um, so they've signed a, a lease with the B Development Authority, and in the next few weeks, keep your eyes and ears peeled because they're gonna be start, starting the, uh, hiring process, and then lastly, Taco Bell finished their, uh, facility in, uh, Beeville's, uh, retail district, and, um, uh, those three jobs, uh, come with a capital investment of about twenty-seven million dollars, and once, uh, like fiber, uh, once, once the fiber company and Electric Power and Energy Solutions are fully up and running, along with Coxin in twenty-three, um, has now begun their hiring process, they have openings right now, uh, this is a company called Battle and Sands, um, there's a job fair scheduled for February sixth and seventh, so if you have friends or relatives that are looking for a job, that are interested in, uh, a career in the frac sanding industry, uh, pay is, um, a range of anything from eighteen dollars an hour to as high as twenty-eight dollars an hour, with great benefits, so if anybody's interested, there will be a job fair at the B Area Partnership, uh, offices, February sixth and seventh, um, and then, oh, that's it, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Seitz, for that report, go ahead, commissioners, do you have any questions?
I appreciate you kind of to share that.
Sure.
I, I also want to, uh, let you know that the news here started off extremely well, uh, it's only January, we've already had two site visits, I know one left B County with a lease in their hands, and, uh, they just need to get their owners to sign off on the opportunity, um, this is a, a company that's in telecommunications, and then we had a very good site visit, a manufacturer that's interested in, uh, initially sixty thousand square feet of space that has the potential to grow into a much bigger facility that manufactures, uh, safety cabins, and they're interested in hiring about a hundred and fifty people, and then I'll mention that, uh, Electric Power Solutions, in the last meeting that we had with the, the owner of the company, um, if all things come to fruition as he would like it to be, he could have an opening for about fifteen hundred employees out of Chase Field, so, pretty exciting things on the horizon for B County.
Thank you again for that report, Mr. Seitz, and thank you for all the efforts that you and your office engage in to bring economic growth to B County, you know, it's a lot of work, and it's sort of, uh, hard to, to measure, it's hard to, uh, provide meaningful metrics, so when it's successful, we lodge your success and take credit ourselves for your success, when it's unsuccessful, uh, we rest a hundred percent of the blame on your shoulders, so I don't envy you, but I want you to know that I do appreciate you, thank you for all you take.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ryan.
In the first few years of my marriage, I realized, uh, quite, uh, unintentionally that, uh, my voice has a calming effect, because every time my wife would ask me, how did your day at work go, and in my youthful exuberance, I would start recounting the exciting tales of being a corporate lawyer, um, she'd be asleep within five minutes. Along those lines, sometimes I, uh, I neglect to, uh, remember that my intonations can lull us all into sort of a trance, which isn't necessarily positive, so at this time, I'd like to apologize for that, I obviously did it, uh, this morning, uh, neither I, nor any of my commissioners, nor anyone in the audience, but one eagle-eyed, and thank you for tuning in to YouTube, uh, one of our constituents sent a, uh, sent a message to let me know that I missed an agenda item that I did not intentionally miss, thank you, uh, for letting me know, um, and, uh, so I'm gonna move back up to agenda item number six at this point in time, public comment, is there any member of the public who wishes to address Commissioners Court, I apologize for skipping you initially, and I hope I didn't silence your interest in speaking this morning, okay, no harm, then, moving on, agenda item number nine, approved B County burn ban order prohibiting outdoor burning, uh, we waited, we did a, a short turnaround, um, we received no rain, I do know every, it's almost every time that one of these is on the agenda, there were some drops of rain in the bed of my truck this morning, um, but, uh, but I think we probably ought to press ahead with that, Mr. Garzic, do you have any updates for us?
Um, so, this morning I did poll the fire chiefs throughout the county, I have four that are wanting to lift it for at least two weeks to allow people to burn off their piles, that's been the biggest, that's the biggest number of calls we've gotten, is people wanting to burn brush piles, um, and most of them, their argument is, it's in a plowed field, it's out in the open, there's nothing around it, so, my recommendation would be to lift it for a couple weeks, maybe next Commissioner's Court, we can revisit it again, but just to allow them some time to, to burn off what they want to burn.
Uh, and, and I know this is way too detailed, and the answer is probably, I don't know, but do you know of any of the individuals that want to burn, uh, these brush piles, if they're familiar with the actual burn ban order and the contents, and, because it does allow burning, it's just you have to follow a more stringent procedure?
Yes, sir, usually when we, when, when we receive those calls, we explain to them that there is exemptions listed on there, if they can fit into that criteria, then there's no issue with it, and most of them, well, I can't afford to hire somebody to come burn my piles, I have a small ranch, or, that's been most of the argument, uh, that we've heard that.
What do y'all think?
Judge, I, uh, I'm in favor of doing that, we had, uh, a burn here last week, uh, thanks to, uh, uh, Mr. Thomas Minger here for assisting and providing the
Thanks to Mr. Thomas Minger here for assisting and providing the right action to allow this project to take place. If the department wasn't on call, the individual followed all the lab protocol. I also learned something new, the requirements for burn ban. I want to get with the sheriff later just to make sure we have the documents. It's an undocumented process, basically, but I wasn't aware of that. Pretty small and simple, who the individual is, the location of the burn, and any mitigating actions that need to take place. But pretty simple, but I wasn't aware of that, so we'll make sure that anyone needs to do that, to follow that protocol. So if I could get with the sheriff, come up with just a very simple, one, two, three, four steps to follow, I think would be good to extend it a couple of weeks.
Any other comments?
No.
We'll put it back on the agenda then in two weeks?
Yeah.
And I don't have a problem with that, Commissioner Olagodas. Sheriff, does that sound good to you?
That's good.
The only thing that I would ask is if the vote supports lifting the burn ban for a couple of weeks, Ryan, can we make sure, I want to try to make sure to the individuals in the community, and I'll say it to you all right now, I want to make sure that anybody that does burn lets Sheriff's Office know that they're going to burn beforehand so that at least we know where the risk is. And if you, depending on where you are in the county, if you know your volunteer fire department, call your volunteer fire department, let them know too. They probably don't want all these calls, but just more communication than less is going to be better because it is still dry. And brush pile burning means different things to different people. But I don't have any opposition to that either. We can try for a couple of weeks, and thank you, Commissioner Olagodas and Sheriff Gary for working on some simple requirements to allow that to happen. Any further discussion? I entertain a motion to lift. Is the current burn ban, does it expire today?
No, when you, when we did it on the 13th, it was a, I think it was a 60-day already on there. So we can just rescind it, and then for the next one, we can talk about it.
Talk about it again, okay. So I entertain a motion to rescind the current enforced B County burn ban.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the current burn ban and revisit it in two weeks.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Oh, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Garza, thank you, Sheriff. Agenda Item Number Ten. Approve and Discuss Courthouse Boiler and Current Boiler Maintenance Contract. Commissioner Olagodas, I'm guessing this has something to do with the boilers, so it's your agenda item, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, on this one, I'm going to ask you and the court to, I got a meeting with Protec tomorrow, I've got a meeting with Quantum next Tuesday, and I, myself, and I know John Nichols is, I wasn't very happy with the contract we have. They weren't answering our questions, they weren't, oh, they just Band-Aid this and Band-Aid that, and then just, hey, we'll call you again, we'll call you again. I was expecting more from this company. So what I'd like the court to do is maybe, you know, I'd like to make a motion to write the termination letter, depending what we hear on the next two visits that I have with them, either implement it or keep them. If that's, if we can do that, I don't know what we can.
Um, yeah, I mean, I can, I can.
I know we need to give them 30-day notice, right?
Right. But I think you probably want to meet with them before.
Right.
Trigger on that. So I don't really know that we need to take any action. I can go ahead and have that letter prepared. And when is our next Commissioners' Court meeting?
February 10.
February 10.
I know you mentioned something when I visited with you about this, and only one company mentioned the water. And they said, that's a key component to the boiler. If you don't treat that water before it goes into that system, it will hurt your offices.
And the issue is our, we use boilers, and a boiler is a heating system that's designed utilizing water as the main heating source, and it gets, turns into steam, and hot water rolls through the pipes. It's an old building, all the crawl spaces are incredibly tight, all the pipes are incredibly tight, the water that we're using, and I'm not, this isn't a dig, on the B County Water Supply District, but our Beeville water system is a hard water, has a lot of minerals. When you put hard water into any system that utilizes this type of, and it's very old boiler technology, hard water should be in a perfect world distilled. Ours is untreated. So we're running this mineral-rich water through our system, which if it hasn't already caused catastrophic issues, it will in the future. And so that was one of the things that we discovered during the last, it's been four or five weeks of trying to get the boiler that we have up and running so we can get through the winter storm.
We've made some, we've made some progress.
There's been a lot of, lot of, lot of good movement, but that's definitely an issue that we need to look at in the future.
And currently, I am getting, I've gotten one bid for a new boiler, and it's around $50,000, but that's just the boiler. The other company called, said they use a third party to treat the water before it goes in, so that's an additional cost. They also recommend, so I want to hear both of the, both of the bids on this.
Well, and if we move it into a complete replacement of the AC system at the courthouse, that's going to be a selected proposal process.
Yes, sir.
Very big project. All right, so like I said, I don't believe there's any action, and I don't really want to, I don't want us to prospectively vote to terminate a contract that, then, we don't want a contract. Because the Protec folks are, they're good, they came in a year and a half ago, a year ago, last year?
Last year.
Last year. And so we want to find a way to find the solution that works best for B County. This has been a very stressful time for maintenance, for the staff that works in the courthouse, for Commissioner, he is our construction commissioner, thank you, Commissioner, for that. And so it's, we're just duty-bound to try to make sure that we are with the right partner. But it's, it's a company, Protec, that came in and saved our bacon last year, earned the contract. And so it may be that we just need to make sure that us and Protec are on the same page about what our needs and expectations actually are versus what they would like to provide or not provide. And so I want to give, I want to give them and all of our partners the benefit of the doubt to the greatest extent possible. So there's no motion to be made on Agenda Item Number Ten? Then moving on, Agenda Item Number Eleven. Approve Cost and Funding Allocation for the Addition of Fifteen Feet to Existing Emergency Operations Center, EOC Parking Lot. Commissioner Olagodas, you have the floor, sir.
Judge John, thank you very much. Judge, we've had many discussions here around the parking lot issue. Unfortunately, when the architects last designer here designed a parking lot, they did the design based on standard vehicle. Here in South Beach County, we have very large vehicles, large trucks. It was quickly identified that we're going to have an issue with the parking lot space. And thanks to one of our Commissioners who pointed out a fence issue developing to the parking lot issue, so I would like to, we received some cost back for the expansion of the parking lot. We have a little bit more work to do on clarifying some of these costs. I'd like to make a motion that if we could approve moving forward with the parking lot, with the cost basis of not exceeding $50,000, I believe it's going to be much less than that. I have met with the county auditor, we've had some discussions around that, believe you did have the funding that corrected.
Is that one from 432?
Um, 432.
Is that the one with, you set aside for the air conditions?
Well, if Judge wants to use the 409 money that, that, you know, that's in file line, we can move some of that out. There's about 14,000 still in that liability line of interest, our interest, so we can suck that out. But it looks left over, but Sheriff's always used 409. 409 about 32.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. We need to get this fixed. I mean, even if everybody in the county drove smart cars instead of full-size trucks, getting in and out of the parking lot would be a problem. And so I, you know, we need to get this done. I think that's a fine approach. Hopefully, the cost will be minimal. All construction projects, we're still reeling from our experience five, six years ago. All construction projects have snappies and hiccups, needing to throw a little extra concrete on the ground and move hurricane fences in the grand scheme of things, relatively minor, but it'll have a major impact on the usability of the facility in the future. So did you make a motion?
Yes, so the motion would be is that we approve extending the parking lot by 15 feet, not to exceed $50,000.
Utilizing funds is summarized during the discussion. All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Twelve. Approve Cost and Funding Allocation to Add Concrete Between the EOC and Sidewalk at the Expo. Commissioner Olagodas, you have the question.
So yes, Judge, thank you very much. So this is the area between the EOC and sidewalk. Many discussions towards how that portion would handle, and then also how it would handle the drainage portion of it. I'm not sure if any action needs to be taken here. Bottom line is we received some cost estimates to place concrete between the two areas to help eliminate some of the upheaval of weeds. And after receiving those pricing back, it was pretty expensive, and having some discussion with you, I'm glad we would like to do a two-step approach. The only type is two steps. So number one is to fill that area with some rigid soil, positive sand rock, no landscaping. I'm trying to think of the right word I want to use here, but it's not, it's not actual landscaping, it was just, just a median to remove some of the excess water, they call it, between this area, which would be much, much more cost-effective. My guess, anywhere between $2,000 and maybe $4,000 of field. And if we get the county to do it, of course, it would be much less. So I'm not sure if I need to make a motion just because of dollars and the smaller, so I just wanted to bring to the court's attention that we're not going to be utilizing concrete, and we located, figured out another way of mitigating the problem that would save the county a lot of money. So, I don't want the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Olagodas?
Are we going to add any protective bollards to the, in front of the condensing units outside?
Yes. So we've had, that's a different, yeah, a little bit of a, little bit of a different subject, but you're right, Commissioner, we've had that discussion here with our maintenance manager here and the plan is to kind of utilize some existing bollards that we were able to locate, saving cost back to the county. But we need to protect those areas.
Excellent. Anything further on this agenda item? Take no action. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Update and Approval to Add Asphalt Between the EOC and Expo Auditorium. Commissioner Olagodas, you have the question.
So thank you, Judge, again. I just wanted to provide the court with a little bit of an update. This is unfortunately an ongoing situation. The area between the Expo and the EOC, we'll call it the breezeway, we've been having a little bit of a challenge getting quotes back from some of our vendors. Just taking a little bit longer. There's several issues. Number one is the uncertainty of the amount of plumbing that's fallen between the Expo and the EOC is totally unknown. We didn't want to use concrete for the fear that as soon as we put concrete, we'll have to tear it up because of the leak that could not be known to us. So right now, we're trying to secure prices. We do have a couple of vendors that we reached out to, so we should be getting some pricing pretty soon here to do that. Another option that we had looked at was utilizing our road and bridge department to throw some unplanned or reclaimed asphalt in that area here, but we felt that asphalt would be much better than just throwing a bunch of rock in there. So that's just a little bit of an update. Do feel free to move on in court, we'd like to have you some, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but once you get the information and we know what the cost is, I'll bring it back to court.
Any questions, comments?
Other than asphalt and reclaim, there's going to be a lot of difference in price. That reclaim does pretty good until maybe another year or so when we figure out that, okay, it's going to stand, and then it's going to break, then we go back to asphalt.
It would buy some time, for sure.
For sure. Because in reclaim, because in reclaim, it's significantly lower cost.
Sure.
To me, it looks the same if you're not adding that.
Along with the pack.
It's already got one preliminary layer, so.
No concrete.
That's the only common opinion.
No concrete.
No concrete.
No concrete.
Okay. All right, thank you, Commissioner. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Approve Cost and Funding Allocation for the Addition of Photocell to the EOC Outside Lighting and a Dimmer Switch in the Main Conference Room.
So yes, Judge, like in any design, sometimes it's hard, I'll call it, delving the details until you start turning the light switches on and realize the effect of illumination in the room. So working with our EOC director here, I'm sorry, Emergency Management Director here, he identified a couple of areas that needed to be looked at. One is from the security measure, the outside to put a photowood tech cell to provide some automatic lighting. Second is in the main conference room, which I think is an excellent idea, where whenever there's a presentation, you can turn off the two or three lights in front, right over the, directly over the screen. Sometimes it prevents a good clear image of what's being projected. So we secured some preliminary pricing. I think, Ryan, I think that you got that, we got about $5,000 plus or minus to make that change. I've not had this discussion with Madam Auditor as of yet to understand the cost impact to the county.
I would recommend getting into 518, which is, Mr. Garza's making some repair of a building so that we have a joint.
Sharing.
Sharing, if they would go cost.
Ron, would you like to add anything?
No, just whenever they did the outside lighting, for some reason, they put the light switch to control the lighting in the lobby. So if you're not mindful, that light stays on. And we noticed the other day that it was on, looking for the light switch, where it's tucked away behind a door. Why it's behind the door, couldn't find where the darn light switch was, was, it was behind the door. So we had the electrician move the switch to a different spot, so it's a little bit more accessible, but still being able to be automatic on and off, I think is going to be very beneficial.
One of the other benefits, Judge and Commissioners and Madam Auditor, is the electrician that's currently still on board, making some minor adjustments to the current contract, if you best utilize, is very familiar with the wiring, very familiar with the process, so it should go a lot quicker. Bring in a new vendor, they're going to have to go through a little training cycle, so it'll be good. So with that, if no other comments, I would like to make a motion to move forward on securing pricing, to make modifications to the outside lighting and also the main conference room at a cost not to exceed $6,000. Ron, are you good with that?
And that would be out of funding 518.
Yeah, Department.
Department, 518. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Garza. Thank you, everyone. Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Thank you for your patience. Approve the Installation of Tynan's Volunteer Fire Department E-Dispatch Monitor in the EOC Control Room. Commissioner Mingers, come on down, sir.
My name is Thomas Mingers, I'm currently the Tynan Fire Department Chief. A little bit of history, about 15, 20 years ago, we had some trouble getting volunteers to carry their pagers. Pagers are expensive, so I found an e-dispatch system. It's a, simply a computer with a scanner beside it, scanner plugs into the computer, it listens for the tones, and then it sends it out to your shop. And Tynan picked that up about 20 years ago. In the meantime- In the meantime, Tynan, Skidmore, Popolo, Pawnee, Pedestalita, and Normana are all on that same system. I'm the administrator, but it's kind of me, it's the Tynan, I'm just the administrator. But the entire county, minus Beville and Blanconia, is using the system. So, it's a computer, it's a scanner, it needs Wi-Fi, it needs power, and an antenna. And currently, it is in my sister-in-law's house over here on Adam Street, because we don't have the range on our radios to, that it would be consistent in timing. And so, we would like to move that to EOC. EOC has hardwired Wi-Fi and power backup. It's just going to make it a more reliable system, take up a small space in the room. Spoke with Mr. Ryan Garza. He said he thought it was a great idea, but I needed to get Commissioner's Court permission to move that over there. Your cost is going to be, where we plug in a little bit of electricity. I can't see any other cost. We maintain the equipment, and we're paying for the system, not asking for any of that. We just want a location to plug it in, that it will work with.
Are there any questions? The only thing I'd say, Mr. Garza, would you please make sure you get with IT, because it's going to be coming through our system and Mr. Mengers, we, ever since our cyber attack in '21, we've bolstered and strengthened our, I don't know, so out of touch with technology, but our internet system, so sometimes the rules that we have in place to protect the integrity of the data that we have to keep online and have to keep in our computer system, those rules have some negative impacts in the operation of other simple processes. So, just FYI, just so that you guys go ahead and loop IT in, so we can make sure to try to avoid that, because the last thing we want is for your system to not work because it's fouling up some back office rule that we have. I'm sure there's a workaround, and I really appreciate everything that you and your volunteers do. And thanks for bringing this to us, and I'm glad that we can accommodate you, depending on if I have a motion.
So, Judge, I'd like to make a motion in the interest of safety that we allow the...
E-dispatch.
E-dispatch, thanks. I drew, I was trying to figure out the right name there. With, you know, providing that we get approval from our IT department to move forward with that decision.
Could I ask you to consider revising your motion? I'm not asking for approval from IT. I would rather be directing IT to make sure that this solution for the community works and to change whatever rules we have to accommodate that so that we don't have this issue.
Very well articulated. I'll change my motion to your state.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Mengers, for everything that you do for the community, your presence here this morning. Once again, thank you, Mr. Garza. Agenda item number 16, you're welcome to leave if you want, but you're also welcome to stay. Agenda item number 16, approved Texas assessor collector's request for payment of new term surety bond with the Texas Comptroller's Office due on January 31st, 2025. So, I have a motion to approve, go on, a second. I have a motion and a second. I think that was Commissioner Lenny caught that one first. Any further discussion? Do we have all the proper paperwork?
Yeah, we're waiting with the, with the back end.
Okay. There's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 17, present certificates of participation. I'm going to go ahead and read it out. Present certificates of participation to B County Commissioners Precinct 1 Christopher Lenny and Precinct 2 Dennis DeWitt for successfully completing 6.5 hours of educational training during the District 11 County and County Judges and Commissioners Conference given by Randy Shower. Unfortunately, Ms. Shower is out ill, as so many other folks in the county are right now with the different bugs that are going around. We wish her a speedy recovery, and I'm going to pass on this agenda item. Actually, we'll just table it. I'm going to table this, and I entertain a motion to table this agenda item for February 11th.
February 10th.
For February 10th on the agenda. I've got a motion, go on, a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Apologies, I was so questioning, you have a chance to vote. Agenda item number 18, approve racial profiling report for B County Council Precinct 4. It's in your agenda packet. Do you have any questions? I have a motion to approve. Go on, a second.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception.
What's that?
You did, you clicked. Again, it's my first. Agenda item number 19, approve resolution opposing elimination of countywide polling place program participation. That's a fun one to read. Let me just do it again. Approve resolution opposing elimination of countywide polling place program participation, opposing elimination of electronic poll books, and opposing elimination of electronic marketing devices. That's the agenda item with the most peace that we've ever had. We have Ms. Warnix here this morning. Ms. Warnix, you have the floor.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This resolution that I asked to be put on the agenda has come from our association and for our, all the elections administrator, we have a couple of bills up, they're pending in this legislation statute, trying to do away with the countywide polling place program across Texas. They also want to eliminate our electronic poll pads and our electronic voting. Many of the counties have submitted this or very similar proposals to their courts so that we can get it in front of the legislation that our counties do not want to go step back. We don't want to revert to where we were before. And so, we're just asking you to review this, and we would appreciate your support in supporting us in moving forward, trying to keep that from happening.
Thank you, Ms. Warnix, do you have a motion?
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll just say thank you for bringing this to our attention. For those of y'all who may not recall, we actually dealt with this issue on a county basis in '23, '22? Yes. And it was somewhat uncomfortable, but it was a good discussion. We considered all the available information that we had in front of us. We had people on both sides of the aisle addressing the issue to Commissioners' Court, and we wholeheartedly approve, believe in, and support Ms. Warnix and all the efforts of Commissioners' Court prior to us in moving to a more efficient, more economical, and secure way to exercise your constitutional right to vote in B County. This resolution merely says the same thing. We can trust the system, we can trust our elections administrator, we can trust the technology, and we want to be able to do that. Just so you know, if those state bills pass, and I don't believe they will, but if they would, it would increase the burdensome nature of our elections process by opening, how many, 17?
13.
13 different places to vote. That's staff requirements for those locations, equipment requirements. If we get, do away with electronic voting, which is routinely used in the United States and all over in the world, we'd have to go back to hand ballots. Anybody remember hanging chads? Electronic voting is superior to human error, and the electronic systems can protect against human error. So, I will wholeheartedly support this. And if there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion, I'm sorry, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, Ms. Warnix, thank you, Commissioners. Moving on, agenda item number 20, recognition, don't go too far, recognition of achievement for graduation of Texas Registered Election Official TREO Program by Andrea, I apologize, I just added extra, Andrea Martinez, Assistant Elections Administrator, and the renewal certificate for Laura Warnix, Elections Administrator. And I have both of those documents here. Ms. Warnix, is there anything you'd like to say at this time?
No, sir. I would just like to congratulate Andrea for completing. It took, it's two years to get this certification, and she takes four classes each year, and she is now fully registered election official. So, we'd like to congratulate her, and I'd like to give her a picture, we're pretty sure she was there.
We can do that in just a second, but first, let's give her a brief round of applause. This is important, and this is how ideally all of our departments would operate. For you to have gone through this training, to obtain this certification, is great for you individually, and I'm happy for you individually, but selfishly, from the county perspective and from Mrs. Warnix's perspective, this is a wonderful opportunity because we have some redundancy in your office. And so, as we look forward to the future, we have a path to provide continuity and security with the very important role that your department operates in B County. So, thank you for going through this process. Thank you, Ms. Warnix, for supporting, encouraging, and going through the process as well to be renewed. Thank you all for everything you do. I know we thank you all right after a vote and before a vote, but there's a lot of work that you all do throughout the year, so thank you for all of that.
And to add to this, the first half, we did have to pay for, but our organization, our, it's Texas Association of County Election Official, we got a grant, and so we did not have to pay for the second half of our classes at a cost of $199 per class. And they gave us a certificate or a grant to come to the association in the mid-lunar for free, which was over $300, we get that granted to us, and then also my renewal. And then, now I'm in the process of taking syrup classes. Those classes run $499 a piece, $499 for each one, and there's twelve of those, and those are under a grant also. So, we're working on those, that certification.
Music to my ears as well as Miss Anto's.
No, hang on.
We like free. Okay, this time, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Warnix, please come up. Let's get a photo op. We're going to get this on our MySpace page.
MySpace. MySpace. Thank you.
That's my feature that I was.
Yeah.
All right. Anything further?
No, sir. That's fine.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, yes, I do have something. Just an update in the elections office. We have received our approval from Secretary of State to upgrade our equipment to 2.7, and we are in the process of doing that, so we're going to be moving forward with that, which is going to add some extra security benefits and so forth.
Grant-driven as well?
No, we are going to be upgrading our poll pads and so forth, so we will be, but we will be in line with everybody else.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Warnix.
You're very welcome, sir.
Agenda item number 21, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, GLO Community Development Block Grant, CDPG, status of project update. We've got a little bit here in the intro. Anything further to report?
No, I think Commissioner, we just emailed the other day, so things are moving forward.
No, no, other than it's in the final review phase, maybe.
That would be so great. I mean, if we can find a solution to Silver Creek, I know there's three other projects, but I know that one is of particular interest to the county. If we can find a solution for that, that would just be amazing. So, my fingers crossed, everybody else, light a candle, cross your fingers, throw some salt over the children, whatever convention is. Anything further?
Nope.
All right. Moving on to agenda item number 22, American, how's the internet going? Are we doing okay? We got time, boys. All right. Strike that "l" as "d" expression. Agenda item number 22, American Rescue Plan ARP, status of projects. Commissioner Lenny, anything to report?
Pretty much tapped out.
All right, sounds good. Again, wonderful, wonderful job executing that by you all. Executive session items, we have no items for executive session, so we move on to agenda item number 23 adjournment.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all, gentlemen, for your presence here this morning. Thank you to everybody else that was here. I hope you all have a wonderful week, stay warm. I was kind of surprised that the cold front came back so soon, but I didn't like that Cuban weather on Sunday.